Donald and, Donald and Robert's terms are right after this meeting.
Good evening, everyone. It's January thirteenth. Ascension Parish Planning and Zoning Commission is now in session. Would you all rise where we pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Staff, introduction, please.
Stacy Webb, Secretary for Planning and Development.
Cody Morton, I'm the attorney for the Planning Commission.
Ricky Compton, Planning and Development Director.
Ben Moran, Planner.
Lance Brock, Zoning Official.
Rhonda Bro, Engineering.
Bob Turner, Engineering.
Thank you, everyone. Chairman's comment, I think at this time, we need to get a motion from, from the Commissioners. We need to name a new Commissioner. This is my last day as Commissioner over this, this planning and zoning board. Can I get a motion, please?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we add to the agenda election of Chairman for this year for the Planning Commission and a Vice Chairman for the Planning Commission.
Second. It's been motion, can be second?
Second.
So noted, Matthew Pryor will be, will chair this commission?
No, 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 we have to, we have to nominate.
Okay.
We have to add it to the agenda first.
Alright, then, thank you.
And we have to vote.
Can we get a vote?
Well, we have to vote first.
Can we get a vote?
Yeah. Aye.
Any opposition? So noted, motion passes unanimously. Where do we go from here? Get their nominations.
Yeah. I'd like to nominate Matthew Pryor for Chairman.
I'll second that.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? So noted, motion passes. Matthew Pryor, Chair of this Commission unanimously. Need a motion for Chair? Vice Chair?
Oh, let's let Matt take over from here.
Alright.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Matt Pryor.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess our first order of business would be to get a motion for a Vice Chairman.
Yeah, I'd like to move that Maury Bishop be elected Vice Chair of the Commission.
Moved by Mr. Tifosi, second?
I'll second.
By Mr. Ori, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion passes. Mr. Bishop is the Vice Chairman for the year 2016. Okay. We're gonna move on to, to the agenda then, as set forth. First thing is Chairman's comments. Before we get, before we get started, I want it to be noted that in the summertime of 2015, we were advised by Mr. Sanji and Mr. Burgess, two Commissioners, that this would be their last meeting. They officially sent their resignation into the Parish Council. In December, we were advised by Mr. Tifosi that he had to resign because of a conflict of interest with his company doing work for the parish. And recently, we were advised by Mr. Ori that he was resigning from the Commission due to family concerns. And I want to thank all four of these gentlemen. As a relatively new member of this Commission, I will say that in my time here, we have not always agreed, but our discourse has always been cordial and respectful. And we've always tried to do our very best to follow the law as given to us by our legal counsel and the District Attorney's Office. So, gentlemen, thank you very much for your service to this Commission.
Thank you, Matt.
I would also like to recognize our elected officials here tonight. Mr. Doc Satterley is Parish Councilman and two newly elected Parish Councilmen, Mr. Bill Dawson and Mr. John Cagnolati. Thank you all for being here and being part of this process. Alright, we will move on to the general business of the Commission. First up is the approval or denial of the minutes for the December nineteenth, or December ninth, 2015 meeting. Can I get a motion on that?
I move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Sanji, second. I have Mr. Calendar, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? There being no opposition, the minutes are accepted. Now, we're moving on to item number eight, the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Burgess, second?
Second.
By Mr. Calendar, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? There being none, the motion passes. Alright, we're moving on to item nine A, which will be a public hearing to approve or deny the following family partition. Mr. Falgue.
James Falgue, representing Earls and Associates and the Nickens on the following family partition, asking the Commission for approval.
Alright, and this is item nine A, the Rayford Nickens property. Staff, any comments on this?
Yeah, I have on, in the review comments that all the existing users of the, it's an existing twenty-foot that they're expanding to thirty-foot private access servitude. All those existing users will have to sign off for it, but additionally, this was left off, they'll need to have something signed and recorded for the additional servitude being placed on their property. So when somebody goes to pull the information for these lots from the Clerk of Court's office, it's, there's something there that shows that they now have thirty feet of servitude rather than twenty.
So does the plat need to be amended?
No, it's just a pre deal.
No, yeah, it's just an agreement recorded before the plat is signed.
We will open a public hearing on this issue. Does anybody sign the card wishing to speak? Alright, we will close a public hearing on the Rayford Nickens property. Does any of the Commissioners have any comments regarding this? Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Do you want to make a contingent upon all of the recommendations by staff? Yes. We have a motion to approve, subject to all of the existing users of Drury, Drake Laney signing not only the plat, but signifying their intent to accept a thirty-foot pre deal servitude. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
We have a second on that?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Tifosi, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Alright. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item nine B, which is a public hearing to approve or deny the family partition of the Tanner property, lots C two A and C two B. Yes, ma'am.
Ellen Jackson with McLean Taylor Incorporated, asking for your approval.
Do we have any staff comments on this?
Yes, sir. The same deal as the previous one. Part of the access servitude is going on other properties that aren't part of this survey, so they'll have to sign a pre deal servitude agreement and have that recorded before the plat could be signed.
We will open a public hearing on this matter. Does anybody file the card wishing to speak? We will close a public hearing on this matter. We will ask for, or any comments by the Commissioners? Ask for a motion?
I'll, I'll move for approval.
Subject to the, all of the landowners signing off on a thirty-foot private servitude. Second by Mr. Calendar, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? There being none, the motion passes unanimously. Item ten, moving on to item ten A, a public hearing to approve or deny the following preliminary plat for major subdivision, preliminary plat, Grand Oaks subdivision. Is anybody present on this?
My name is Derek Murphy with Quality Engineering and Surveying, representing America Homeland Tonight. Asking for approval tonight on the preliminary plat for Grand Oaks subdivision. We have a traffic impact study approval on this particular project. I think the, is an outstanding planning item, which asked us to put a temper, put a T turnaround at the end of lot, near Lot Eight on Sterling Oaks Avenue. We asking tonight for consideration not to put that, as in the code. It talks about two hundred and fifty feet or two full lots. I think, uh, staff had made a recommendation to add that T turnaround. And from, we also tonight, just ask for consideration whether y'all want the T turnaround or not, and what the interpretation is of that code. And then, we're also asking contingent upon certain items left over. A few items in the drainage study that hasn't, still needs to be addressed. We're asking tonight for your approval with those conditions. And we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Staff, comments?
Let me speak to traffic first. I have no objection against the, uh, traffic on the subdivision. It's well within the ability of the point of view to handle that. However, the traffic report was, spoke of site distance as you pull out of the road, and it required that trees be removed along the frontage. I'd like that to be a condition if, if there is approval. Other than that, I have no other, other comments on it.
What about the T turnarounds?
I think that's, in my mind, that's the Planning Department to speak to. It's a code item. There are, as far as traffic, it's two houses, so it's, it's not a high-volume turnaround, but I think it's, the Planning Department needs to speak to the requirements on that.
This is gonna come up in our staff report later, too. The, the way the code is written now is kind of, it's just kind of ambiguous. It says that a dead-end street that exceeds two hundred and fifty feet are a width of two lots in length. And we don't, it doesn't describe what two lots in length is. Two lots in length could be two, two hundred feet, five hundred feet. It doesn't matter. We just feel like it's just good practice at the end of a dead-end street to have a way that trash collection, emergency, mail, whoever can turn around.
Are you saying, does the code require it?
It's not.
I don't know.
It's not right. It's not a, so I'm looking at it like it's a-
Is that two lots in length?
Well, I mean, it looks like a little bit less than two lots in length. It looks more like it's a little bit less than a hundred and forty feet, more like a hundred and twenty-five feet, which is less than two lots. And just in looking at that short distance, it almost looks like it acts as a T turnaround itself. A big T turnaround. Hundred and twenty-five foot deep. I mean, it seems like it would be, it would add a lot of confusion to the end of that street, putting a T turnaround on there, but as far as code goes, and you're, you're telling me an undefined two-lot minimum.
Two lots in length.
I don't even, I, I, I'm looking at it like it's not even-
We recommend let it be there.
Oh, it's not in the code with the two lots? It's not defined, it's less than two hundred and fifty feet.
Two, if it exceeds two hundred and fifty feet or two lots in length.
But it doesn't exceed two hundred and fifty feet.
I would say by that, this is one and a half lots. So, maybe it meets code by not having it. We just recommend that it be included there because it's cutting it close.
To me personally, I'm looking at it like it kind of acts like a T turnaround as it sits almost. If a car gets back there, they can just simply back up and back out, being only a hundred and twenty-five foot deep, car being about twenty foot long, bus sixty.
Generally speaking, the code says where it's required. We're recommending it because it makes sense that it'd be there for garbage trucks, for school buses, for UPS trucks, something bigger than a car that maybe is not safe to back up a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty feet down a public street. So, we put it in there as a recommendation. No, the code, we think the code is pretty ambiguous, that's why we're proposing an amendment to that, but we're basically saying, we recommend it because it makes sense. You guys don't want to put it, then apply the variance and, and say they don't have to put it.
Well, man, I hate to go against the recommendation that y'all want. I mean, I'm, I'm looking at it like it almost looks like a big T turnaround as it is right now, and once a twenty-foot-long vehicle goes in there, they've got, you know, eighty feet or so to, ninety feet to overcome, a hundred feet to back up.
Well, a school bus is not gonna go down there. School bus is gonna stop at the corner. It's a question of maybe the garbage truck going down. That, that would be the only concern we'd have, but the, the school bus won't be a problem.
A fire truck?
Back up. You got lights?
Got a hydrant.
I mean, every car has reverse, I mean-
Yeah.
Let's open a public hearing on this matter. Has anybody, uh, signed a card to speak?
Jeff P T.
Mr. P T? Pettit? Okay. And just, Mr. Pettit, before you speak, I just want to let everybody know there is a three-minute time period. We want to give everybody their opportunity to be heard on whatever issue you've come to be here for, but please, if you've spoken and gone your three minutes, please let everybody else speak before you stand up and speak, so.
Excuse, excuse me for a second. I apologize. We hadn't, we need to talk about drainage, I guess, in my mind, before we have public hearing. Rhonda has a number of comments related to the drainage, and it might impact your input from the public.
Alright, well, Mr. Pettit, I'm gonna put you on hold for just a second. And I apologize to Rhonda and the Drainage Department. Go ahead, Rhonda, please.
Okay, sorry. We have not finished the review for this. We've gone over yesterday several comments, and there's still a few items remaining, a ditch rerouting, the base flood elevation, some soil mitigation. Several items that still are, are pretty big in here. These are items I've seen before. They can be handled. Usually at this point, we're not looking at those items this far along.
I didn't understand the, the last comment.
Which one?
The one about, we're not used to seeing these kind of items.
There are still items to be handled in the drainage impact study that have been not, not been. We've had comments back and forth, just in the time limit, we have not finished the review.
Well, Rhonda, is that for lack, just lack of time on our part, on staff's part?
It's-
Lack of help, you know? Because I've made that point before, I think you need more help, but is that primarily it?
It could, I mean, the first set of comments went out, but the, you know, I guess some of it is a Christmas holiday, and getting it back in, I think I got it in last week on Tuesday. So, you know, it took me a couple of days to look at it, and then sitting down with them over some of these comments, so.
Well, we have in the-
Yeah, some of it is not having help.
We have in the past approved such submittals contingent upon approval of drainage plans or traffic studies or whatever was missing in order that the applicant didn't have to come back before us, but it was always, you know, contingent upon. I, I, obviously, if, if the traffic study or the drainage study in this case is never approved, then the plat is not approved, and the subdivision's not approved. So, whenever we made such a contingency, it was always with the idea that this would eventually either get rejected as a study and have to be resubmitted, or that it would get approved. Right? So, we've done that in the past, so. We'd have a hard time, I think, you know, unless there are other things that, that we need to hear, I have a hard time not approving a contingent upon approval of a drainage study, assuming that, which we all assume, that if you don't approve it, if the drainage study isn't approved, this isn't approved. That's what the contingency is all about. I just want to clarify that in everyone's mind. Just because we may approve something with a contingency, doesn't mean it'll ever get approved if that drainage study is never approved.
Now, Rhonda, let me ask you, when we do this, does that cause problems for your department? The fact that we, we will approve in advance with that contingency, does that cause any difficulties for you?
I guess mainly the understaffing is more of a problem, but the, the time restraints, most of the time restraints are to get to this point with the plat, and then once, once that time restraint is gone, then the next priority is the next one that comes up for this. So it may, it may kind of sit in the back, which I don't like. That has happened a little bit, just right now with our sheer volume that has gone on. So sometimes my priority has to be what's coming before you guys.
Rhonda, how many of these, do you have a number of how many of these we've approved with a contingency? Whether it be drainage or traffic, that? Uh, I guess for lack of better-
I believe seven.
That we've approved with a contingency? How many out of those seven have we reconciled?
Oh, that are, those are unreconciled. I don't, there's more than that, that have been approved contingent that I've been aware of, at least two or three additional that have reconciled.
So you've got seven kind of backlog that's waiting to be reconciled? Is that before they can submit construction plans, or before they can-
Yes, before they can submit. This, these are not as difficult as some others where they've changed the plat last minute because of traffic. That one was a little bit hairy where, last minute, there was a change because people here did not want to, want to turn, turning lane, or didn't want it, they wanted the dead end or something like that. They wanted to change that, and last minute, the entire plat was changed, so.
Which will change watersheds, it'll change?
It, no, it did not affect me in that case. But in that case, it was approved, and we forgot to put a contingency. Hey, we're gonna have to look at traffic because everything we've looked at is different, so.
So is there any kind of time restraint on when we, if we approve something with a contingency, let's just keep it to drainage? Seven months ago? I mean, is there any kind of time constraint saying that we have to reconcile this?
Not that I'm aware of.
We can hold up a developer for an infinite amount of time after that? I mean, I think we have a, I think we have a time restraint on when a preliminary plat is submitted. There's what, a sixty-day window that a decision needs to be rendered? I believe, on a preliminary plat? If we leave this in contingency, it, it can go on infinitely right now? I mean, it, is that accurate to say something along those lines? I mean, am I saying that clear enough? Asking that clear enough?
You know, what I think would, would be something that the only way that I'd be okay with a contingency is if it does have a time restraint on it. And, and I think three months is plenty. Uh, if they are serious about doing this now, and, and they need it, and they've, they are rushing us, you know, to get this done, and it's gotta get done, well, to me, three months is plenty time for them to reconcile all of these issues. So, I would not want a contingency unless it's got a stipulation of time. And if that time is exceeded, we're there to start all over with, with the current code of the, the new submittal.
So the developer takes just as much responsibility for not getting it reconciled as what the parish does?
Yes.
If we can't come to an agreement with the comments back and forth? I mean, it could keep going back and forth, it sounds like to me.
Correct, but they, you know, each one of the, the stipulations, and it's, it's well documented, Rhonda's got a, a very detailed description of, I guess, she has gone back and forth with the developer as to, you know, as far as what's serious and what's not serious and all that. We consider everything that's there serious. So, whenever those issues are reconciled, or, what I'm saying is, is it needs to be reconciled in a certain amount of time. If it's truly a rush that they really want to get working out there, it needs to have a time limit, and I think three months is plenty.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I, I hate that we would not approve something within that time period because of, of our own, of our own fault, because we're just over, overburdened. I'm confident, although our Parish President has just taken office recently, that on one of the ten thousand things on his plate is to find additional help for engineering when needed, especially at peak times when you, when you need some help. I know we've had arrangements in the past to do that. I'm not sure that money's been allocated, enough money's been allocated to, to hire an independent firm to come in and help you when you need that help, so that we can't be blamed for delaying approval, or delaying at least review of a study. So I appreciate what y'all are doing. I think, Joey, I think that's a very good comment, very good idea.
I know I've not been successful so far in getting Rhonda help on this, and that's, we're at the beginning of a new fiscal year, and it, that's hurt us in that I'm not able to do anything right now either. However, hopefully later this month, we'll be able to get, I guess, the budget fixed to where we can start, you know, getting some help.
That's good to hear. Any other comments from the Commissioners?
Just from what Joey's even, even suggesting about the three-month deal after a contingency is made, is this something that we would need to write into an, an ordinance form? I mean, right now, we have it written to our sixty days from application to a decision being rendered, but I mean, now we're talking about taking this to the next level of, individually putting on a contingency that we make for just this approval or the next approval. Can we even, would that go in the form?
I mean, right now, we're doing it, we're leaving it open-ended. So you can put a time period on it, but you have to approve or deny. In other words, you can't say, let's leave it on the table and come back, you know, in thirty days and bring it back before the Planning Commission, and we'll consider it again. So you can, you can approve it with the contingency, you can put a time period on it, and you have to work it out. And if not, then it'll be deemed denied, and you have to come back to the Board.
I mean, what if we make, what if we make an approval or denial decision before this is reconciled between Engineering and, and the developer, and, and we can't make a decision within that sixty days? Doesn't a decision automatically get?
If we don't approve or deny within sixty days, it's deemed approved below.
How does that, how does that leave the onus? That seems to leave the onus completely on Ascension Parish rather than the developer taking responsibility for comments that might go back and forth and exceed sixty days? Or what if we all, I mean, you know, being understaffed, I mean, we, we possibly potentially can't get to this? How, how do we do it without a contingency? How about that?
Well, then deny and make them come back, is the only way to do it without a contingency.
Because it's incomplete? You simply deny it because it's incomplete until-
If we deny it, and they'd have to reapply, and once all the contingencies are worked out, then they come in front of you guys again, and you have to approve it.
So make sure that it's all worked out before you come for the initial preliminary plat?
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
I think that's why, why Ricky's trying to get the ordinance change correct. You address that issue?
That's part of it. You know, when, when an applicant submits an item to our staff, the onus on us is to get it to you within that sixty-day timeframe. And we've said for years is that people submit things that aren't ready, but they're submitting them to start that clock. And if this body starts denying things that aren't ready to be approved, then their clock starts over every time.
Do they have to resubmit a fee, a review fee? Like, I mean, what is the fee?
If you deny them, they have the opportunity to either appeal the denial, which gets them the opportunity, they can't submit any new information. That would go to the Appeals Board as it was submitted. They would review your decision and then make a decision based on whether or not your appeal, your denial was satisfactory to code. If they choose to not appeal the denial, then they would have to wait another thirty days because they will have missed the deadline for the next meeting and submit again. I mean, that's how you solve the problem, is you start denying things that aren't ready.
What do you, what, what does it cost the developer to come in here and, and apply for a preliminary plat? You know, I mean, is it?
Stacy can answer that question, I don't look at money.
Is it? I was wondering if it was hundreds or thousands to do it. So after sixty days, if we can't come to a decision, and, and Ori gets denied, and they go through the appeal process and don't make it through the appeal process in their favor, they could regroup, reorganize everything? They have to fork out another three thousand dollars to go through the application process from scratch?
Yes.
Really?
I think it's probably the time thing that's more important. And here's the thing that bothers me. We get a staff recommendation that says the proposed plat meets all guidelines for major subdivision. What's missing, what's missing is the time it takes to get a, a, a drainage study reviewed and approved. But it, but it otherwise meets all our guidelines. Now, now, if this said, if, if this said, this plat doesn't meet all our guidelines, then, yeah, we have a problem, we have to deny it.
Can it be defined that one of the guidelines is an approved drainage impact study? An approved traffic impact study? Is that, is that part of the guidelines? Is that falling into that category?
Well, here's the thing, the traffic, the, the drainage impact study is not rejected, it's just not finished being reviewed.
And that's a tough spot.
And we've, we've already set a precedent in the past of approving it contingent upon that. And it's not dangerous to do that because if the drainage study is not approved, then the plat's not approved.
But are we creating a problem by doing that?
Well, that was a, that's a good question. Is it burdening the staff? By doing that, which is why, I, I, my point is that we shouldn't be burdening the staff or the developers. We should have more help to review that if, if, you know, if, if that's the bottleneck, if that's the problem. If, if we just can't, don't have the staff and the time to review these. It also is, it, it also is the, the developer's responsibility, too, I agree with that.
We're taking part in, in creating this bottleneck. The developer has to take some responsibility for creating this bottleneck if everything's not ready before they're not officially ready to submit.
Their part, too.
And, and we can take, you know, the parish, the staff can take part in that bottleneck. I mean, it's, it's a, it sounds like a three-part deal. I mean, we kind of creating it when we're doing it contingent upon something. It sounds to me like Rhonda's getting a backlog of, of seven drainage impact studies to review while we steadily have, every meeting, we're having two, three, four new preliminary plats coming in. It's, it's creating a problem on staff, and, and I agree. It's, uh, it's, it's creating a problem on staff. And, and I agree, yeah, they are understaffed. I, I, I do. I think that they need a lot of help. We need a, a consultant. We need to figure out a solution on that end. And I, I, it sounds like they're in the process of coming up with some kind of solution, but.
The, uh, I have a question for the staff. The drainage impact study, that, that goes to the heart of the, uh, health, safety and welfare of the community. Making sure that, that whatever development is going on, on these developed properties doesn't affect the drainage to the neighboring properties?
Yes.
And then I have a count, a question for our legal counsel. We have numerous times, um, I think, approved many subdivisions contingent upon being, uh, being approved subsequent by drainage, uh, for approval of a drainage study. If we backtrack on that now and draw a hard line and say, well, it doesn't meet the drainage impact study, so even though it meets code, it affects, it could affect the public health, safety and welfare. By going back on that precedent, could that be a, uh, a standard of arbitrariness on our behalf, uh, for denial of a new subdivision plat?
No, as long as you cite your reasons for why you're denying, if you're citing that your reason is for the general's health, safety and welfare of the public, then I think you would be okay. I think what we need to watch out for is there's, there's case law on this issue. It was actually a middle district federal court case that was, it was actually against this Ascension Parish Planning and Zoning Commission. And what it stated was that the actions of the Planning and Zoning Commission is to enforce the existing regulations. You guys do not establish general policy. That is left for the council to do. So what you guys have to do is look at the code, see if it meets the requirements and then either approve or deny. Now, the code does say that you have to have an approved drainage and traffic study. So if you wanna deny on that basis, you're okay to do it.
So while it meets the, and I think what the, uh?
Well, the, the drainage impact study and the traffic impact study, or the drainage study and the traffic impact study is part of the code. So it's part of the regulation.
And it's required before a preliminary plat is rendered a decision on.
Yes.
And then my next question is, the, uh, the ninety day time period on a contingency sounds very good, um, and sounds very reasonable. But, um, one can imagine a situation where there's, might be a backlog. And so, uh, that may subject the parish or the staff to, well, why didn't you get to ours? Why did you take this one over ours? And if we get to the end of that ninety day window and the staff, because they're under manned, made a priority decision, could open that up to litigation that the staff didn't do or the parish didn't do what they were supposed to. I think that's more of a dangerous precedent than, um, either doing what we've done in the past, approving it contingently or, um, saying, look, until we get more staff, we're not going to approve it unless it meets all aspects of the code, including a drainage and impact study, or a drainage impact and traffic study.
And I would recommend that if you guys go that route tonight, to not put a time period on it just because the statute does say we have to approve or deny within sixty days. And we'd have to see if we did put a time period on it, are we giving a, a per se approval or denial? We need to determine if we did put a time period on it, are we legally allowed to do it? So I would recommend not to do that tonight. And I can address the issue at the next meeting if you guys wanna look at it.
I mean, if we recommend this for denial based on the fact that the drainage impact study was finished, inconclusive or, or, or not finished? I mean, is that, is that something that?
You got, you guys, if that's what you guys wanna do, you're legally entitled to do that.
I mean, yeah, I mean, could we?
If you, if we approved it with a contingency and the contingency is not met, isn't that effectively denying it?
No, because it's open ended. They'd have to, if they, if they never meet it, we didn't deny them, they just can't move forward with construction until it's, until it's met.
And it sounds like it's creating a backlog. I mean, out of, what if we approve twenty plats and, and she has seven of them that are still?
Yeah, and my, my problem is subjecting the parish to, you know, if, if you deny it because we don't have the time, that's what I'm trying to get at. Is it because we don't have the time to review it? Or is it because there are so many problems with it? Is it on the developer's side or our side or both?
Yes.
You know, are we, uh, subjecting the parish and the staff to a problem because we're rejecting something because we don't have the time to review it?
I think that's what I was so non eloquently trying to ask. Are we opening ourselves up to some kind of litigation that it's, we're gonna have to prove that we put the appropriate amount of time into this and, and, and now someone has to make a decision as to whether or not it was ready versus we, uh, we didn't?
By, by state law, you have sixty days to either approve it or deny. So, I mean, the timeline is set forth in the statute.
Keep it simple. Keep it simple on that timeline.
My, my question is this, though. Uh, when the developer submitted the original plan, did they submit the drainage impact study at that time?
It all comes together?
It, it all came at the same time. So that's when that sixty day period, time period started.
Yes, sir. We, we accept all applications and they must be complete on that date, by the, the deadline date.
Okay, and this one was?
I'm assuming it was.
Okay.
Was, was not?
What?
It was not?
No, I said, I'm assuming it was.
It was complete.
It had a drainage impact study in it. It just, the drainage impact study didn't meet the requirements of, of our drainage department.
Or there were questions about it which needed to be answered.
So now we're stuck in a, in a back and forth of comments and, and, and trying to work it out? And that's where you're citing that that could become, it's hard to figure out who's at fault for that responsibility, if any one person or any, you know, who, how much blame to take.
I know there's people that wanna speak on this, so while we mull over that, let's go ahead and open the public hearing, uh, for this. And I'd ask, uh, Mr. Pettit, you were first up, so, um, the floor is yours, sir, for three minutes.
My name is Jeff Pettit. Um, I live in District Ten. Used to be Brian's district, now it's John's. I've spoken to both of those gentlemen and, uh, I've also spoken to a couple of other councilmen. I've got numerous questions. Um, according to the subdivision regulations for the parish, uh, four dash five, you either shall approve or deny, as I think your counsel has said. I don't see anything in there, and maybe I'm missing it, that allows for contingencies. I don't see one thing. Not one. It, it goes back to when, uh, and I believe Mr. Compton and his staff does this with every new planning and zoning commissioner. You get a copy of the master plan, approved in ninety-eight, amended in oh-three, amended in oh-nine. Attached to that is an appendix, you get the, I've seen it listed two ways, so bear with me. ULDC, Unified Land Development Code, or LDC, Land Development Code. You also get the Home Rule Charter, where the job of a planning and zoning commissioner is to develop a master plan, develop and/or amend, that's in there. You also are told of the requirement, Act eight fifty-nine of the two thousand and four state legislature that requires every planning and zoning commissioner to attend a certification course. For example, uh, there's different ones in the state, but I, I think the one most appropriate for every planning and zoning commissioner here would be the one put on by CRPC, which our parish, and it is our parish, all of us, Capital Region Planning Commission. It's a half day. They do it on Saturdays once a quarter. So my first question is, has every planning and zoning commissioner here gotten that certification to be in compliance with Act eight fifty-nine of the two thousand and four legislature? You have one calendar year from the date you're seated to do this. The certification is offered once a quarter by CRPC. What, thirty minutes away in Baton Rouge? The last one they did was actually in Plaquemine. And it's open to the public, by the way. You don't have to be a planning and zoning commissioner to attend this, and it is at no charge. Has every commissioner done that?
Uh, yeah.
I attended at home, so.
Because in that, um, in that, one of the reasons to deny, uh, first, it, it lays out very clearly in that training and, uh, I've been through it, is that you have, according to state law, you have the discretionary authority to deny for the help, as you put it, Mr. Pryor, so eloquently, the, uh, welfare and health and benefit of the community. Um, as your, sorry, your counsel said, and I'm sorry, sir, I missed your name?
Uh, Cody Martin.
Cody Martin. Um, I, I think according to?
I hate to interrupt you, but your time is up according to our procedure. Um, if, if nobody else speaks, I may allow you to come back up and speak.
I just have one more question?
You can ask it.
Um, at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting in January of, I think it's two thousand and twelve, the bylaws of the previous Planning and Zoning Commission were set aside. Were new bylaws put into place? And if they are, uh, where can a citizen of Ascension Parish go to see them?
I'm, I'm sure that's reflected in the minutes of whatever meeting did that.
I can't find it if, um.
The minutes are available. I know that. So, who's our next, uh, person to speak?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. That's it? Okay. All right. This time we'll, without anybody else being, uh, identifying them to speak, we'll close a public hearing. Any, uh, further comments by the commissioners on this?
We'll just have to make a decision.
Now, and I will say in, in regards to the health, safety and welfare of, of, uh, the community, um, you know, there's been a lot of debate over the past several months about what this commission can do and what this commission cannot do. Um, and, and, and Mr. Martin referenced, referenced it earlier. This commission was actually sued, um, several years ago in, uh, federal court in the, uh, middle district for the state of Louisiana. And Judge Frank Polazola, who was the presiding judge at that time and a very respected jurist, um, in his own right before his passing. In fact, he was one of my professors in law school, made it very clear that ours, our duty here, and, and he defines the law. The court defines what the law is, is, is one of administrative. And so if there is a health, safety and welfare concern and we deny it on that basis, that will be subjectively or subsequently reviewed on a strict scrutiny basis. Uh, so we have to be very sure if we're going to deny it based on that, um, in my opinion, as a commissioner, that we have to be more than, than sure because otherwise we could get into allegations of arbitrariness and capriciousness selecting one subdivision over another, uh, which is not the way the law is designed to do and not the, uh, certainly standard that any court would apply. Administering on the basis of compliance with the code is a different thing because the code is set out by the parish council, um, four members of which are here today. They set the rules. Those are the rules that we have to determine if or not, if, whether or not a developer has followed those rules. And if he has or she has, then I think we are bound to, um, approve it because the council has made that determination that these rules, uh, however they're set forth, uh, will not adversely affect the health, safety and welfare of the community. So, uh, that being said, if there's no further commi, comments by the commissioners, I will.
Just one, one comment, Mr. Chairman. Um, with respect to the comment about us, uh, us being required as a commission to approve or deny, approval with a contingency is approval.
It is.
Uh, and with respect to drainage studies, from an engineering perspective, drainage studies can always be worked out. It's just a matter of time.
I agree.
So that the only reason we've ever approved anything with contingency for approval of drainage study is our knowledge that drainage studies can be worked out, can always be worked out. It's never gonna be a case where you can't possibly solve the drainage problem.
It's a yes or a no. It's not a gray area as to whether or not it's gonna halfway drain or it's gonna drain. It's gonna, it's a yes or a no. It's either gonna adhere to our codes or it's not gonna adhere to what we have, our policies in place.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, you wanna address the concerns about the, uh, T-turnaround, uh, I guess to the lesser extent, to the greater extent, the, the comments regarding drainage and the other comments?
Well, the T-turnaround, you know, I, uh, I submit to the commission on, on what they feel about that. Uh, the staff recommends it. Uh, of course, we would like not to have it. The code is ambiguous in that area, we feel, and, and it sounds like the staff agrees with us. If you feel that the T-turnaround is, is needed, then of course, you know, it will be acceptable to your decision there. Um, as far as the drainage impact study, I've been up here several months and, and we, we have gotten approvals with contingencies and we're working through those, those drainage impact studies. Uh, we're some of the ones that Rhonda still has out there. Uh, we haven't, we haven't got to a point on any study yet that I can tell you that we're at an impasse where we don't think we're gonna be able to get it worked out. Uh, it is a matter of time. It is a matter of workload. It is a matter of engineering principles that we're going through and meeting the comments and, and, and so forth. Um, last month, I was in front of y'all and got a couple of subdivisions approved with that contingency. But one month has passed and now we're talking about, do we wanna approve with contingency or not? Um, but with that being said, I mean, we've accepted and we've asked for this approval with the contingency. We, we've basically, uh, with the prove and deny, we're acknowledging that the contingency, uh, is acceptable. Uh, and, and that was part of, uh, I think that lawsuit with the, uh, you know, accepting deferral and, and that kind of stuff with the sixty days. We're accepting the contingency. We're asking tonight for you not to do anything you haven't set a precedent yet to do. We're asking for the contingency. We're absolutely, without a doubt, sure that these drainage items can be worked out with the staff, uh, and move forward. We know we're gonna be able to get an approved drainage impact study. And if for some reason, lo and behold, we're not, or cannot, then this project cannot go any further. So therefore you've accomplished what you needed to accomplish. You've approved it contingent upon. And you've accomplished that where if, if it's not met, if it's not for the betterment of the, of the, uh, welfare and safety of the public, that it can't go forward without that engineering sign off. You know, when you talk about the welfare, welfare and safety of the public, I am a professional engineer bound by that code and that creed that we are here for the public. So I, my stamp goes, or my staff's stamp goes on those studies. Those studies get approved and reviewed by a third party, the parish or review agency or whatever it might be. We have several sets of eyes on that. We have a drainage impact study policy. We have a drainage code. We have a subdivision ordinance that, all of that gets abided by. So with the approval with the contingency is still approval. It's also still a roadblock that if it can't be worked out, that you do have that safety net. But gentlemen, we're here to tell you that we still today don't feel that we can't get our approval and move forward with these, with these projects. And we understand, and that's where we're at tonight. We're asking for this approval. We're asking for that contingency and we're knowing that we're gonna be able to reach that understanding and agreement and approval.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Maybe you should think about becoming a lawyer.
Uh, before you guys vote on it, I just wanna read, this one, they are requesting a variance. Uh, if you know, if you guys decide that the regulations do require them to have a T-turnaround, which by reading it, it says when a dead end street exceeds two hundred and fifty feet in length, if you look at this plat, there's one street, Sterling Oak Avenue, it goes from lot twenty all the way to lot eight, so. You guys, it's up to interpretation of you guys, what do you think? But if you do decide to grant a variance, there's six things that you must consider. Are you guys aware of the requirements to, um, grant a variance?
So, let me, let, well, let's, before we ask that, I wanna be clear on this. So the, the street itself exceeds two hundred and fifty feet in length. There's no doubt about that. Is that correct?
That's another thing that's ambiguous in there. Yeah, the street itself exceeds two hundred and fifty feet, but the dead end part.
From Grand Avenue to the end is only about, it looks like a hundred and forty feet.
It's a hundred and twenty-five.
Hundred and twenty-five feet.
Yeah, yeah. So that's also ambiguous too.
So is the?
It's a dead end street that exceeds two hundred and fifty feet.
Cody, or Mr. Martin, the question to you is, do we consider the whole street or that little portion of the dead end?
Well, I can just tell you what the code says. You guys can interpret it. But it says when a dead end street exceeds two hundred and fifty feet or width of two lots in length. So you guys can interpret, what do you think a dead end street means?
From the corner to the end.
From the corner to the end, that's very well said. I, I would, okay. That influenced anyone else's thought process?
There is no, there is no decision, definition of a dead end street. I mean, I, I could argue that both ways, but I could argue it a lot better saying that this whole street.
Well, if you're on lot, lot eight and you're heading to the left, you, you don't, until you pass that corner, you haven't hit another dead end. You can turn right or you can go straight.
I haven't entered the dead end yet.
That dead end is from the corner to the end of.
Absolutely.
I think you could argue it both ways.
Absolutely.
You feel strongly both ways?
I'm going on you.
No, I said you could argue it both ways. I didn't say that. All right, uh, that being said, uh, do you wanna read the requirements, Mr. Martin, of a, of a, of a variance, please?
And it's rather lengthy, so I'll, I'll try to read fast, but no variance is strict, uh, no variance is strict application to provisions of this ordinance shall be granted by the commission unless it finds that the following requirements and standards are satisfied. One, the granting of the variance shall be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the regulations imposed by this ordinance for the district in which it is located and shall not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. Number two, the granting of the variance will not permit the establishment of any use which is not permitted in the district. Three, there must be a showing of unique circumstances. Four, there must be a showing of unnecessary hardship. Five, there must be a showing that a variance is necessary for the reasonable use of the land or building and that the variance as granted by the board is the minimum variance that will accomplish this purpose. Number six, there must be a showing that the proposed variance will not impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property, substantially increase the congestion in the public streets, increase the danger of fire, endanger the public safety, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the adjacent neighborhoods. There must be a showing.
There must be a showing that the granting of the variance requested will not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied by this ordinance to other land structures or buildings in the same district. The commission may prescribe any safeguard that it deems necessary to secure substantially that objections of the regulations or provisions to which the variance applies."
Then I have a question for staff. If we were to grant the variance, would that be a problem with the six principles that he just gave us?
Well, I don't know if there's a variance to be granted because nobody's decided what the code is actually asking for.
I don't think we've determined that it's a hardship.
I think as a preliminary matter, before we vote on this, and this may not be the proper procedure, but we probably need to vote on whether or not we interpret the definition of a dead-end street in terms of this subdivision and Sterling Oak Avenues to be the entire avenue of Sterling Oaks Avenue or the portion of Sterling Oak Avenue from Grandview Avenue to the end, to the east.
I guess my point, Matt, is if you're on, say, Lot 15 headed east, you don't see a dead-end sign until you hit Lot 9.
Right. No, and what I'm saying is if we're considering, if that's the view of the commission, then we don't need to grant a variance.
That's right.
If we consider the entire street to be a dead-end, then we need to grant a variance for it.
I mean, you can consider the entire subdivision a dead-end, there's no outlet, you know?
There is one outlet.
There's no other outlet, there's one outlet. So when you're coming into that subdivision, there can be a, you know, there'd be a dead-end sign, it'd be a no-outlet sign. But if you're on Lot 15 headed to the east, there shouldn't be a dead-end sign until you get to that intersection.
Well, why don't we do it this way? What I'll do is ask for a motion, and if the motion is to approve, I would like something about the necessity of a T-turnaround on the east end of Sterling Oaks Avenue and an addressing of the drainage issues, which has not yet been approved, the drainage impact study.
That would be the contingencies.
The contingencies, yes.
Could I add, that you also add about the removal of the trees for site distance?
Yes.
Bob, where are these trees? Are these trees on this?
They're along the front, each along Corner View. When you pull out of the intersection, they'll be right and left of the, of the intersection. So they need to clear those away to get the site distance that's required for an intersection.
And that's a safety issue for that intersection.
Yes, sir.
But do we have the right to clear those trees?
They would be within the right-of-way of Corner View.
They're within the right-of-way? They're within the parish right-of-way?
Yes, sir.
We normally try to keep that clear.
I realize that. I realize that. The, the traffic impact study that was done by a professional traffic engineer analyzed the available site distance-
Yes, sir.
-at that location, and it was their determination that the trees needed to be removed to get the safety site distance at that location.
And we have determined for fact that we have the right to remove those trees because they're within our right-of-way?
They're within the right-of-way.
Okay, yeah.
I would not want to remove any more than absolutely necessary, but for the safety of the public, both on the street and people coming out of the, in and out of the subdivision, they must have a safe intersection. We could not support an unsafe intersection.
Yeah.
You got that, Jim?
I move for approval with the addition of the site contingency that has to be approved by Traffic Department. Also, the contingency that the drainage study be approved by the Drainage Department. And that we add a, we need the requirement of the T-intersection.
Your, your, your motion for approval is subject to the T-turnaround being added at the end of East Sterling, Sterling East Avenue?
Yes, those three contingencies.
Yes. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Burgess.
I will second.
Yeah, I'll second.
Second by Mr. Chafisi. All in favor?
Was there a time limit by the way associated with that?
No, there's no time limit on that, or on the contingency.
Okay.
All in favor?
I'm going to say no. I'm going to go with no, just based on the T-turnaround part of the contingency, but I'm going to be the lone ranger on that.
So we have five in favor, one opposition motion.
Since we have opposition, call for a roll-call vote.
Okay, we'll do a roll-call vote. Mr. Chafisi, or do I do it, or do you do it?
You do it and you abstain from voting unless it's a tie.
Okay. Mr. Chafisi?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Sanji?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
No.
Mr. Calendar?
Yes.
The yeses have it, motion passes. And the approval of the subdivision based on the contingencies cited by Mr. Burgess. All right, moving on to item 10B is approval of a major subdivision preliminary plat for Ascension Commerce Center, the fifth phase and sixth phase, quality engineering and surveying. I assume that's you, Mr. Murphy, again?
My name is Derek Murphy, Quality Engineering and Surveying, representing L.J.-
Mr. Murphy, before you start, I was meant to do something between these two. I did want to recognize that after we started, Mr. Randy Clouatt, another parish councilman is here tonight. Thank you for being here, Mr. Clouatt. All right, Mr. Murphy, back to you. Sorry about that. Sorry for the interruption.
We're here representing L.J.G. Land Company, asking for your approval tonight on Ascension Commerce Center, fifth and sixth phases. We had came before you before, and I think the biggest point of contention that we had was about the traffic study. Just talk a little bit about, about that. This developer, as part of this, as part of the Highway 30 and Highway 73 interchanges, are going to put in, just so we kind of be clear, he's going to put in traffic improvements along Highway 30 in a right and left turn lane out of Industrial Drive, a right turn lane on Highway 30 into the subdivision, a right and left turn out of Industrial Drive on Highway 73, a left turn on Highway 73, and a right turn in on Highway 73, per the traffic study. The point, Mr. Bob Turner, at the last meeting that we were here at, talked about his concern at the intersection of Industrial Drive and Highway 73. We have worked out an understanding and are willing to put in an agreement with the parish that at some point, if DOTD allows a signal at Highway 73 and Industrial Drive up to 10 years from the date of this approval, that the developer will pay for those improvements and not put it on the burden of the taxpayers. That is an agreement that he is willing to do, and I know there's some, some legal things that have to be done there, but we agree to that in principle and are willing to make that as part of the approval. We've also, just like in the past, we do have four items outstanding on the drainage impact study and ask for the approval contingent upon that. All other things that we had talked about, such as the energy polls, I think we've satisfied. All the other comments have been satisfied as far as my understanding of planning is concerned. We are asking tonight, now, go back to one thing. As discussed in that meeting, there are certain waivers that are part of this, this project, such as the open ditch section that you see here on the preliminary plat. We're asking tonight for approval of this plat as is, with those additional conditions and the contingency on the drainage study. It's the same, it's the same as the last subdivision. We feel very confident that we're going to be able to work this out. We think that, you know, we've, we have it worked out. We're going to be getting together, Rhonda, very short order and wrapping this one up. And we ask tonight for your approval. We ask to go forward and ask us to let us go ahead and move this project forward.
Staff?
Mr. Bob? I'd like to speak to the traffic aspect of it. Mr. Murphy is correct that my concern is for the new intersection being proposed at Industrial Drive and Highway 73. They, the traffic study recommends turn lanes at that location. And still yet, it was a level, when it's full buildout, it'd be a level of Service F, primarily for the Industrial Drive vehicles. Based on that, I was really concerned about it. The traffic engineer did analyze traffic signal at that location, and it would function correctly. So, part of my recommendations was that a, if a traffic signal is warranted, and we can't require it, it's a state road. So, the state would have to approve a traffic signal at that location, and they would not do it until such time as it was warranted. Right now, there's no intersection at all there. And so they would not approve a signal prior to the intersection being constructed and traffic being developed. Since the analysis was based on a full buildout of the subdivision, at some point in time, the traffic signal would be warranted, but it would clearly not be warranted at day one or year one. But at some point in time, and it just seemed reasonable that we would have a time period that, within 10 years, if the signal is warranted, that the developer would construct it. And they have agreed to do that here tonight, and I'd like the minutes to reflect that and that, based on that, I would approve the traffic impact study.
Bob, who would, who would request the, who would petition DOTD for the study?
Well, I think that at, at the time that it got to the point where it was warranted, that the state itself would come down and say that it needs the intersection. Now, I, we need to have some method to assure that the money is there. I mean, just saying, "I'll do it," is fine. But there needs to be some document approval by the legal department that is satisfactory to assure that it will be done within that time period. If in year eight, we need a signal, we ought to be, have a document that says we can collect the funds for the signal.
And is there an amount? I mean, how much?
It's my understanding, and I didn't make the estimate, but it's my understanding from the traffic engineer, it's approximately 150,000. But that's-
That's in now dollars, not in 10 years from now dollars, though.
Well, that's present day dollars.
And when you say "traffic light," do you also mean turn lane or?
Well, the turn lanes are a requirement of the traffic study, irregardless of the traffic signal. Derek had mentioned the lanes that they were going to build at Highway 30 and the entrance there. He also mentioned lanes that they were going to construct on 73 and at this entrance. So those lanes, I'm saying are given. They have to do those. But the question is, is about the signal.
How do, how do we put a calendar reminder in our calendar to remind ourselves to reanalyze that intersection and see whether or not it's warranted? I mean, in five years, do we, do we need to stipulate that in five years?
In my mind, that's part of the document that would have to be developed between the parish and the developer that says that those funds would be assured for that period of time, and then as that time approached, just like we currently do bonds on subdivisions. When a subdivision is completed, we require that the developer put up a bond to take care of anything that has failed within the next following year. And we track those. So it'd be, in my mind, it'd be something like that.
It could be in the form of a 10-year bond?
I, I'm sorry, that, that needs to be a legal question as to how you do it. But I just think that there is a method to assure that the funds are available. It could be a bond, as far as I'm concerned. The legal and finance people would have to make sure that it was done in the proper manner.
And if, and if it becomes, if a signal becomes warranted in year 11, it's on us or the state, then?
It's on us or the state.
Right.
I, I don't think you can have a, in my mind, a open-ended requirement.
I would agree.
And so 10 years seems to be a reasonable time to allow the buildout of the subdivision. And at that point, it would generate the need for the signal. If you had full buildout and the signal was not, then you wouldn't.
I mean, if it builds out in four years, it's going to be needed then.
Who pays for the five-year-down-the-road traffic study to analyze this?
Well, generally, the state would come in and analyze the request for a signal. They would determine if it was warranted or not. And it's, it wouldn't be that difficult to, for them to make the determination as to warrant a signal.
But we're, we're 18 years later on loose more analyzation as to whether or not they need a signal there, and what if that exceeds that 10-year period? I mean, if we're waiting on the state to analyze something like that, should we put some kind of mechanism in place that? I'm assuming that we're not going to clarify or specify that you, we're going to make a contingent upon some kind of agreement being made, but, I mean, do we need to put some kind of fail-safe in place that we're not going to completely wait on the state to do something or to analyze that intersection? To, to make sure that we don't pass that 10-year period?
Yeah, I think the bottom line is that even if we had the funds to build the signal today or a year from now, we couldn't build it.
DOTD probably-
Primarily because DOTD would not warrant it and would not allow it. And so it has to be warranted before we could require a signal at that point. And once we get to the point that it needs a signal and it is warranted, it'd be good if we had the funds to build it.
And there, DOTD, they applied to DOTD to have access to their state highway and got it approved?
Mr. Murphy can probably talk about any of the requirements. I'm not privileged to that permit that the state would grant for this entrance, but I'm sure that it probably included the requirement for the turn lanes.
Drainage? Ms. Rhonda?
As Derek said, we have, we have a few things outstanding, very similar to the other we can probably work out. The only one that I'd like to set aside is to maybe put a contingency that discusses the ditches, which I can't speak on, on my own. That would have to be approved by East Ascension Drainage as to the size of the ditches and servitudes. I've spoken to them a little bit, but there, there needs to be a meeting between the developer and that director to figure out if they're going to change the servitudes or, or how they're going to deal with those ditches. So I just want that as a contingency as well, please.
Any other staff comments? Mr. Compton?
If there is discussion about a 10-year timeframe, I would recommend that the 10-year timeframe start with the first CO within the final plat. This project's been going since before I got here, so nine, 10 years. So make the time start when the subdivision has started developing with the first CO within this final plat.
That's a huge motion.
10 years from that point.
Well, no, now Rhonda's kind of has, kind of has me questioning with the open ditch situation. I mean, we haven't even reconciled the open ditch situation that-
No, open ditches have been reconciled. The size of ditches, yeah, that, that variance has been granted. This is existing ditches that are, that are in there, that are our parish ditches as to what size they are, if they're, if they're large enough and if we're going to have the right servitudes for us to be able to maintain them.
Does it matter that we might be looking at a 30-foot servitude? You might require a 35-foot servitude, therefore changing the preliminary plat, do we approve? Could that be?
I don't know. I, I, this was brought up when we discussed what size.
Derek seems to want to chime in. I guess that's okay?
Just to let y'all know, there's several large ditches running through here and they show up on the plat. There, right now, there is existing maps out there that show the 40-foot drainage servitude. One of the things that came up recently, looking at everything, was, is there enough servitude for the parish to maintain? They just asked to look at that a little further. We have no problem with that, to get with, with the Drainage Department and look at that. If a, but on record, in the clerk courts office, on every map ever, ever recorded for this piece of property has this 40-foot servitudes. So that's, those servitudes that you see on the preliminary plat are shown as existing, and there's not really any new servitude shown on there. So just keep that in mind, it's showing the existing.
Oh, it makes a big difference.
If they, if they do have to be increased or something, or something that we can work out, just like we do on every preliminary plat, we show all the existing. If we have to, if we have to do a servitude, or, you know, if we put a drain pipe through there, we got to add a servitude as we go through. We, the staff levels a change, something like that, and we can get it recorded during the final plat or something like that. So that's something that we can work out with the staff and, and put that together. I just wanted to clarify that those are existing ditches, but the existing servitudes.
I think my concern was just the typical section up here changing completely from open ditch to closed.
The typical section, we do have, as we spoke last time, we do have that signed off on by, at the time, DPW Director, Drainage Director, and the Planning Director. So we do have those, that is a requirement of that waiver, and we do have those put together.
Great.
All right, we'll open the floor for a public hearing at this time. Has anybody filled out a card to speak? Nobody has filled out a card, so we will close the floor for a public hearing. Any further discussion from the commissioners?
Did we, did we decide there needs to be- Did we, did we decide there needs to be coordination with the Drainage District or not?
That's what Rhonda has asked.
Is that a contingency that we wanna include? Is it just coordination with the Drainage District, or is it some requirement?
Approval by the Drainage District, is that what you're asking for, Rhonda?
I would say at least the Director. I'm not sure if the whole board needs to be that, just, there needs to be a meeting, just say a meeting and an agreement between them.
In addition to the Drainage. Coordination with, but that doesn't really, that's not very specific. Approved by the Director of the Drainage District?
So is there a motion to regarding this, and if it is a motion to approve, I'd ask that you address the approval or submission to the East Ascension Drainage Board Director, the traffic light that has come up from Mr. Bob, and also approval of the drainage impacts? Traffic and impact, yes. Well, traffic has been approved, subject to the the traffic light, is that right, Mr. Bob?
The, I had not approved the traffic impact statement prior to this meeting.
Right.
We did have a meeting last week where the developer did commit to the signal light when it's warranted within 10 years. I had not received anything in writing, so it's, I think, extremely important that the record here shows that he had made that commitment, and either you accept that or reject it.
And Derek, Derek, Mr. Murphy, you committed to that on the on the record, so to speak?
Absolutely, that's why I brought it up during my presentation, that the developer, that's what our intent was, we wanna make sure it is on the record, and we'll even go, I just talked to the developer, say that approval by the Drainage Director, if that's what we want, on those on those servitudes and ditches, so he can write a letter or whatever he needs to do to approve what we're trying to do there, and so we'll we'll open to that as well. So our intent here is to to make sure that intersection is safe for everyone and and move forward.
And the final thing on any motion to approve, I'd also ask who's ever going to move to address the timeframe on the 10-year period, whether it be a certificate of occupancy for the first buildout on that property or some other time, address that in the motion as well.
What I would suggest is that you guys condition it upon an agreement entered into between the developer and the parish, because I need to go back and research if we can legally enter into this type of agreement, and then will we put up whether it's a bond or some kind of escrow amount or something like that. So I need time to determine if that's legal to even do into the future, so if you're gonna approve it, condition it upon an agreement being entered into.
We we have a developer's agreement mechanism in place, but that's only for, what, spuds or something, isn't it?
Well, not a contract agreement under the code, just an agreement as to the traffic light and how we would handle.
Okay.
Make sure it's legal.
I'm getting hung up on that terminology, developer's agreement, I guess.
Yeah, how do we, how do we guarantee the money's there, is basically what you're saying?
Yeah, how the money's there, is it legal that we could put something for 10 year, for a 10-year period?
We can do that, but how do we?
What does it require? Does it require a bond, and do we have to put something in an escrow account? I mean, there's just questions that I need to research to make sure that we can legally do this. So I just ask that if you're gonna approve it, condition it upon an agreement being entered into, and allow me time to draft a legal agreement that we can?
Okay. If 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 all of this stuff still needs to work out, I mean, that's not, what's the difference if we approve it today or if it goes another 30 days? Will we be passing our 60-day limit on this one?
Ask when it was submitted.
Do we know?
I don't know if anything's gonna change.
It sounds like everything's rock solid, it's just a?
I think we can do that. I'll offer a motion.
A timing issue on it.
See if we can get all this language in here.
Agreement in the impact studies?
What?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, I move for approval based upon the the following contingencies. One, that signalization at Highway 73 and Industrial Quarter be paid for by the developer and added within 10 years of the development of the first lot, start of the start of the development of the first lot, if warranted by DOTD, and and subject to requirements of legal with respect to either escrowing money or submit or or providing a bond to pay for that to the in the amount of $150,000, present day dollars. So can we put some sort of CPI on that or something? If it's 10 years from now, it's gonna cost more than that.
I don't, I don't think they they put a cap on it. I think Mr. Bob just gave a estimate of?
Whatever it's gonna be, I wouldn't put a cap on it. Let's not put a cap on it, then. Let's just say they've gotta provide the signalization required by DOTD, okay? Second contingency, that the developer receive approval by the Director of the Ascension Drainage District of the of his drainage plan, that, thirdly, that upon final approval of the drainage study, and fourthly, upon final approval of the traffic study, assuming that's still an outstanding thing.
Same with motion by Mr. Chafesi, second.
Second.
By Mr. Calendar, all in favor? Any opposition? There being none, the motion passes, the preliminary plat is approved, subject to those, to the contingencies set forth. All right.
Thank y'all, sorry, thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
For those of you who are leaving, we're gonna miss you, and I wish you all the luck in the world.
Thank you.
All right, item 11 dealt with the may, the several subdivision final plats. It looks like all those have been removed from the agenda, so we'll move on to item number 12, an ordinance, a public hearing to recommend the approval or denial to the Parish Council of amendments to the Ascension Parish Unified Land Development Code. Mr. Compton, do you want to address that?
So last month, we talked about and requested a public hearing at this meeting, and at this time, I'm fairly certain that all the details haven't been worked out, and so the engineering department is asking that if anyone wants to speak, they can speak, but we postpone any action until next month.
Has has anybody signed up to speak on this issue? Nobody's signed up to speak on this issue. So I will entertain a motion to postpone this public hearing one month to the February meeting.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Moved by Mr. Ori, second by Mr. Bishop, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? No opposition, the motion passes, this item will be tabled until the February meeting. Item 13 on the agenda, staff report.
Okay, we currently have five subdivisions that are in bond. We have 14 that are in some state of buildout. 15, one's private, I'm sorry. Eight that are currently approved and we're waiting on construction plan approval, and nine that are currently in some state of approval of their drainage and traffic and preliminary plat that have not started on construction plans. That's it.
Any other engineering staff reports?
I have one. As you guys may or may not know, the section of the code pertaining to how dead-end streets are treated is a little ambiguous, so I have something, you you guys have it in your packets. We need to, I have to request a public hearing next month to discuss eliminating basically what it says now and just requiring that all dead-end streets, public or private, have a T turnaround or cul-de-sac at the end.
I think I think the way that maybe best to address it is define what a dead-end street is, 'cause that's, I think that could be.
We can add that in, something along those lines, into there, yeah.
I haven't looked at this yet, but, okay. Anything?
It's easy. Yeah, we have a public hearing next month. I'll.
Do we need to move?
Define dead-end streets.
We have a motion by Mr. Calendar, second by Mr. Burgess, all in favor of having a public hearing next day, next month to redefine dead-end streets and make a recommendation to the Parish Council regarding that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None being, the motion passes unanimously. Any further reports from staff or engineering? All right, before we adjourn, Mr. Clouatt, one of our parish councilmen is asked to address the council commission, so Mr. Clouatt, floor is yours, sir.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the latitude. It won't take but a second, but look, I just want to thank every one of you guys for the job you do, okay, and you continue to do. A few of you guys are leaving, you've served out your time, you know, and we sincerely appreciate the work and effort that you guys have put in, put into this. This board has worked with professional ethics, y'all have had a lot of dialogue, y'all have had disagreement, and y'all worked it out. Y'all brought up, you're a pretty good group, you brought up a lot of things and a lot of questions that has went back to staff, and staff has worked on it, brought back, and tried to get some explanations. We definitely need to work on some the legal issues to where that where this board can work hard at trying to determine whether something's good or bad for Ascension Parish or good or bad for our neighborhood, rather than having to be burdened with discussing the legal aspects of every move you make. And that is the responsibility of the governing body of the parish, to try to help you out with with the recommendations from you guys and and the planning zoning staff, and that's something that we gotta work on. And once more, we we appreciate that, and we just gotta work on trying to get some latitude for the staff to be able to get get their, get these reviews done in some type of timely manner, and whether that takes temporary help or permanent rearrangement of the staff and adding on, whatever it takes, and we expect the administration and staff to come toward the council for that. But we got a big road in front of us in 2016. Once again, thank you very, very much, and we look forward to a good year with a lot of changes. We know that you guys hit the front, y'all on the front lines of the impact of Ascension Parish growing, and sometimes it's an undue burden on y'all. So we need to try to do what we can to try to put some things forward and steer a little bit and help the staff bring some things forward that'll clear it up. Once again, I want to thank each one of you, Jackie, Josh, Donald, Matt, Maury, Mr. Robert, Gasp, thank you very much. Thank you, staff, for the work, and let's continue to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clouatt.
Thank you, Chair.
Appreciate it. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
So moved, any opposition? All right, planning meeting is adjourned, we'll take a short recess before taking up the zoning meeting.